Well, I took off two years from board service. I worked just as hard to help pass the last East Sloss for education, to successfully meet our students where they were with what they needed, whether academic, athletic, artistic, or autistic. And I proudly worked to ensure the students of District 7 got our brand-new technologically-advanced William Henry Spencer High School, my alma mater. I look forward to talking with you this evening and taking your questions. Again, thank you all for being here. I'm Kathy Williams, District 7 School Board member. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Kathy. And next, I am going to unmute your challenger and introduce Dr. Walter Taylor. He is challenging Kathy Williams in District 7. Thanks for being here, sir.
Good evening, and thank you so much again. As already said, thank you so much to the Muskogee County Democrats for hosting this forum tonight. Good evening to everyone who is in attendance. My name is Walter Taylor, and I am a candidate for the upcoming election for District 7 Representative for the Muskogee County School Board. As a senior pastor and business owner and resident of District 7, I constantly see the need to redress the educational and literary needs of our community. Literacy and education are the building blocks for shaping our community into becoming hubs for successful young adults who will become and grow to become productive members of our society. District 7 is very interesting because it is diverse ethnically and socially. I believe that I am the voice to bridge the gaps that exist within this district. Having been educated in District 7, I can relate to all aspects of the culture. I will not only be the voice of the highly-educated business professional, college-educated mother, but also the voice of the single parent with three children, the working parents with multiple jobs trying to make ends meet, and the parent of the child who has a disability or diagnosis of mental illness. I believe that I have the responsibility to serve as that voice for my neighbors and for my friends, so all the youth of District 7 will receive the highest quality of education attainable. I believe that my voice is needed to help ensure that the children of District 7 receive the funding and the resources to make that a reality in this new and upcoming decade. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you very much for that statement. Let's see. Next, I'd like to introduce Sheri Aaron. And who is our candidate for... Is it District 4?
Three.
Three. Okay, sorry. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me again. I want to say thank you for having us. I think this is an amazing forum. I watched a couple of your other forums, and I thought they were absolutely great. My name is Sheri Aaron. I am originally from Oakland, California. I'm a mother of two daughters. I'm retired military. I have 14 children currently in Muskogee County Schools that we are responsible for. I have two residential programs, which I name in honor of my mother, whom passed away when I was just one years old. Full-time... I'm sorry. This is my very first forum. I was told not to say it, but I'm gonna tell you all anyway, okay? This is my very first forum. I'm learning to get comfortable in speaking and answering questions and presenting myself, okay? So, like I said, I am a mother of two children in Muskogee County School District. I'm an entrepreneur of several successful businesses here in Columbus, Georgia. I have two residential programs, which are residential programs for girls. We have a total of 12 children in our program, so all of them attend Muskogee County School District schools. I am very active with them academically, and some of them do play sports as well. They're excellent children. I was raised by my grandmother. Like I said, my mother passed away when I was just one years old. After high school, I went on to join the military. I spent about eight years in the military. I medically retired from there. I started my family while in the military. We moved here to Columbus, Georgia in 2008. My husband is 20-year-retired. Um, I'm sorry. After high school, I entered the military, where I served my country for eight years. I started my family there. We got here in 2008. I absolutely love Columbus, Georgia. I love the schools that my children currently attend. They don't attend any schools in my district because of the way they're zoned, but they do attend schools here in Columbus, Georgia, in Muskogee County School District, where I am involved. I have a lot of children that go to school in District Number 7, actually, downtown. That's one of your schools, right, Ms. Kathy? Yeah, one of my daughters, she's actually going from being promoted to the sixth grade this year from your school. I've seen firsthand the need for engagement and involvement from parents who can offer valuable insight when key decisions are being made concerning our children's education by the school board. When I'm elected, I plan to be present at every turn for every voter, just as I am today. My hope is this evening that you get a chance to know me. I'm very approachable. As I was meeting with a lot of my neighbors, they stated that they would like for someone to represent them who's accessible, approachable, and that is me. That is why I'm seeking to see, so that I can represent my district and be present and be available. My name is Sheri Aaron. I pray that, you know, all goes well.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheri. Let me commend all of you because I can only imagine the bravery that it takes to step up and say, "I want to serve, and I'm going to be a public person here," and put yourself out there. So, I've never done that. So, y'all are ahead of me in that regard. So, thank you so much for doing it, for being out here to serve our families here in Muskogee County. You were saying that you're from Oakland. Well, that's where I had my first child, in the Naval Hospital in Oakland, because we're military as well. So, we ended up here in Columbus, and we've been here quite a bit. But anyway, enough about me. I'm keeping you unmuted, Sheri, just to move on to our first question. And I'll start with you. And that is, if you had lots of money to spend, if the budget was vast, what's your wish list for the district? You know, what is it that you would want to establish here?
Well, there's one thing that's already kind of in the works, and I wish that it would continue and be successful, is the combination of Dawson and St. Mary's Road Elementary Schools. That is literally at the top of my wish list. Beyond that, new buses. New buses.
Okay. Okay, great. I'm going to... Dr. Taylor, I'm going to pin you and unmute you and ask... Sorry? And ask you the same question. What's on your wish list?
On my wish list would be a comprehensive plan and implementation of programs that enable single parents to become more involved in their child's education, bridging that gap, addressing some of the socioeconomic issues that are facing our community, and addressing and implementing programs for parents who struggle with literacy, so that they are able to, when their child is at home, able to render the aid needed for their child when they are outside of the classroom. Those programs are at the top of my wish list.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see. And now... There we go. Unmuted. And Kathy Williams, thank you.
So, on my wish list, first, Sheri, buses that are air-conditioned and heated with operational cameras, et cetera, et cetera. You know, our bus fleet is aging. And one of the only forms of funding that we have to utilize to purchase buses is our East Sloss dollars. So, it's so critical that we continue to support our Sloss so that Sheri, you can get your wish list. Dr. Taylor, you can get your wish. On my wish list, things are changing rapidly in our community, in our society, in our world. And so, my wish list has evolved over the last several weeks, two months. Right now, I wish every child in not only District 7, but in Muskogee County had all the resources that they needed to be successful, beyond successful. I wish every child had two engaged parents at home that was able to work with them every night with their homework. I wish that every child in Muskogee County had the digital learning assets and the connectivity needed to enter this new century of distance learning. I don't think it's going to go away anytime real soon. And my sincerest wish is that we will have enough funding to ensure every student has the ability to take advantage of what educational opportunities we can offer them in this new era.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to keep you unmuted, just for convenience sake, and start with the second question that we had from the Muskogee Dems. And that is, what do you think is the single biggest challenge to success that's facing the Muskogee County School District right now? And what kind of proposal do you have for solving it?
So, again, you know, we're victims of what's going on right now. Biggest challenge unquestionably is the pending looming budgetary cuts that are coming from the state of Georgia. We were so close. We were so close to kind of getting over what the last Great Recession did to our district. We were just that close to getting everything that we wanted five years ago, seven years ago, today. And this is going to set us back. Let nobody be fooled. This is going to set us back. I thought that during the Great Recession, I thought that was the most difficult budgetary process I'd ever been through. I honestly believe that these next two years are going to be even more challenging, more difficult to ensure that we do provide that equity, that I have committed my entire public service on the school board, too. But I promise all the voters of District 7, if and when I'm reelected, I will fight to the end to make sure that District 7 has that equitable resources that all our schools will need. But that's the biggest challenge, period.
Yeah, I would have to agree. Hearing that through all of our forums, you know, the funding that our state passes down, you know, through sales tax, through everything, is going to be so, so limited. So, thank you very much. And let me now unmute Sheri. And you... You're still... Let me see. Okay, you're ready. So, what do you think is the biggest challenge that faces the Muskogee County School District? And how would you solve it?
Right now, I think the biggest challenge that we face is our current pandemic, COVID-19, and it's really getting our children back to school. Once they get back to school, social distancing. There were several opportunities as far as connecting technology. I know Mr. Taylor talked a little bit earlier about parents not being able to have or understanding technologies, you know, how I receive what he had said. And I think that's very important, is to be able to get our parents and our students to be able to understand how to use the technology in situations like this. And once we go back to school, social distancing, I'm committed to work with the other board members, if I'm elected, in figuring out how to come up with creative ways to manage COVID-19 in the schools as far as additional testing or whatever ideas that's put out there from the CDC or we come up with collectively, just really to get our children back to school.
Yeah, I think everyone's wondering. It's such a world of uncertainty right now. But yeah, that is going to really be a challenge to get a plan in place for that. So, thank you very much. And... Dr. Taylor, I'm waiting for you to unmute. And there you go. What do you think about the biggest challenge?
I must mirror and say exactly what has already been said. The greatest challenge before us right now is the pandemic. However, let me piggyback on that in my short time. This pandemic only adds insult to the injury of the socioeconomic issues that are already and have already been in place within District 7. And so, it just worsens the problems that a lot of the citizens of District 7 have already been facing. And so, it is imperative that going forward, we begin to reach out and develop partnerships with other organizations because of the budgetary cuts that are coming down from the state. It's imperative that organizations become partnered with our local schools so that the schools are able to foster the environments that are suitable for education. We definitely don't know what the new norm would look like. However, it's our part and it's our responsibility to make sure that our students and our teachers and principals have the resources that are needed to prepare the children for what the current new or the new would look like as it pertains to education.
Agreed. That's... There... I'm sorry. I'm thinking of questions that I already have because of what you guys have been saying, but I want to let our... I'm going to hold back. And thank you very much for that, though, Dr. Taylor. I'm going to hold back because I'm going to now offer the audience a chance to ask any questions. If you have a question, go down to wherever you see... It's either at the bottom or the top of your screen where it says "chat", and you can click on that and just write the word "correct question". And if you would like to ask it in person, I will just unmute you in the order which you have written question. If you would just like to type out the question and you'd like me to ask it, I'm happy to do that as well. So, our first question is from someone that you all probably know, and that's Mike Edmondson. And let me see. I'm unmuting you, Mike. Let me... I'll let you know when it's ready. Okay, Mike, what is your question?
Okay. Well, I was typing it in just to ask. Hello there. Hello, everyone. It's nice to see you. I'm leaving my video off because I think it would be a distraction. You know, quarantine hair, that sort of thing. My question is this. What specific way or ways... I guess, Dr. Taylor, would you increase parental involvement? Specific, not general ideas, but specific ways? It's real difficult, I've found, to get people, even when they're concerned about their children, to get involved. And I just want to know what you might envision as specific ways?
Some of the specific ways in which I have considered and do envision is creating programs that call for the parent and the child to work together. One of the realities of the situation before us is times have changed. And the way that we did things when I was in school, the arithmetic is not the same way anymore. So, it becomes... It can become discouraging for parents to assist children in learning or in homework when they don't understand it themselves. So, implementing programs that allow the parent and the child to come in and work together hand-in-hand, that is one way to increase parental involvement. Giving opportunities to allow the parent to come into the schools on volunteer basis to become more engrafted into working one-on-one with the children in the classroom will help to increase parental involvement. Holding parents more accountable will increase parental involvement. These are just some of the ways that have already began to work with some of the programs that we have here at the Life Center as it pertains to our youth program and how it allows our parents to become involved in the things that their children do within the community of District 7.
Thank you, sir. And if I can follow... Ms. Walker, if I can follow it up with one question. On the parent accountability part of that, you know, I certainly couldn't agree with you more. How can you hold parents more accountable?
There are a couple of ways that I believe we can envision in doing this is sending descriptive notices home, asking the parent to not only sign the notice, but rather to bring the notice back in person to the school. There is a... Creating more flexibility for communication will help to hold the parents more responsible before school hours, after-school hours. Now that this pandemic has forced the education arena into the technological era, taking advantage of technology, i.e. what we're on now, Zoom. It gives the ability for parents who say, "Well, I can't leave my job." Well, you have lunch break. Meet me on a Zoom session at lunch. And now, we have the parental involvement as it pertains to their child's education. We have to take advantage of social media and the internet during this age.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your answer.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Sure. Thank you, Mike. And I wanted to give our other challenger, Sheri Ms. Aaron, a chance to elaborate, if there was any other ideas that you had about that question.
There is an idea that I have. Okay, so I've been going around my neighborhoods, and I've been speaking to all of my neighbors. I think that... Well, no, I don't think that. What I'm going to do is, once I'm elected, I'm going to have monthly forums, possibly in their neighborhoods, where I'm easily accessible for them to come, and we can talk about different issues. A lot of the parents that I've spoken to, they don't have access to technology. So, they had a challenge with those Zoom meetings and stuff. A lot of them, if their child wasn't sent home with those Chromebooks, they didn't have access to it. A lot of them don't have even the smartphones. I know we live in a day and age where everyone has those smartphones and those cool iPhones and things like that. But a lot of the parents that I was able to go out and speak to, they don't have those things to be able to kind of get on those meetings and things like that. But I would like to build relationships with my neighbors so they can understand that I'm here for them. I'm here to answer any questions, any concerns, and assist them through any issues. A lot of times, parents... What I'm noticing is what I want to speak on. What I'm noticing is the parents, they may not have certain educational levels to where they don't feel confident in speaking to persons that are at the schools or even speaking to persons... I'll just leave it there exactly where it's at, speaking to people. So, what I want to do is I want to let them know that, you know, "I'm accessible. You can speak to me. We can build a relationship so that I can help you through any issues that you may have with your child at our schools."
Great. Thank you very much. And Kathy, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yes, I would. You know, District 7 is a very diverse district. And a lot of our parents, as I mentioned earlier, all our schools are Title I schools. All of our parents struggle with being able to engage in their child's public education, whether it's because they're not working one job, but they're working two or two and a half or three jobs, or because they don't particularly understand the new math and they don't particularly understand how that translates into teaching. So, one of the things that our schools in District 7 have done very successfully to counter that because you can say we need to hold our parents more accountable, but what our schools in District 7 have said is they've kind of turned that paradigm and said, "We need to give our families and our students new tools to be able to be successful." So, we're seeing more and more of our District 7 schools implement educational enrichment programs after school. So, instead of Parks and Recreation having their after-school care, the schools themselves, the teachers and the educators in that school and in that community are staying with those students after school. They're doing mentoring. They're doing tutoring. They're doing enrichment programs. They're reinforcing what's taught during the day. And that is one tool that we've seen really be effective on helping those students close that achievement gap.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for adding that on. I'm going to... Let's see. I'm going to... Actually, I'm going to keep you unmuted just because you may... If this question pertains to you, you can be the first one to answer it. Harry Underwood, one of our post-committee members, he has a question he would like to ask. Go ahead, Harry.
Okay. Thanks, Laura. This is Harry Underwood. And so, I wanted to ask about a particular item of Georgia law and everything. It's OCGA 20-2-1181, saying that it shall be unlawful for any person to knowingly, intentionally, or recklessly disrupt or interfere with the operation of any public school, public school bus or public school bus stop as designated by local school boards of education. Any person violating this code section shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of a high and aggravated nature. And so, end quote. So, I wanted to bring that up because in a number of states, including Texas, South Carolina, most recently Virginia this year, they curtailed their own provision, similar laws and everything on disturbing school to no longer apply to students in their own school. Because in those other states, they previously were considered as students who were in their own school and were charged with being a disturbing school could be charged with a felony or an aggravated misdemeanor. And so, they no longer apply that to the students in their own school. So, in the absence of a similar change here in Georgia law regarding that because of the racist aspects of that law, especially after the 1960s, and using some of the laws to attack students who are doing stuff like sit-ins and what have you, is that something that, as members of the Board of Education, you can do? Or what would you be able to do to try to reduce the aspect of this law and everything that criminalizes students being themselves in their own school? Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Okay, Kathy, to you.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that law, Harry, so you'll have to forgive me if I can't talk to the particulars of it. But I can talk at a little bit higher 30,000-foot level. We have a very comprehensive manual that teachers or that students and their parents are given at the beginning of every school year that really lays out what we consider an infraction of behavior. And we allow, as much as possible within the confines of the law, to allow local rule for implementing some of those... Most of those disciplinary actions. Now, there are some things we have zero tolerance. Weapons is one. You know, if you bring a gun to school or a knife, you know, not just a penknife, but a knife, you are going to be turned over to Columbus Police Department. We do not have any say on that. It's zero tolerance. But for the rest of the time, almost across the board, it's really up to the teachers, the guidance counselors, the school psychologist, the principal, to really determine what the intent of the infraction was. You know, was there really an intention to do harm? Was there really an intention to commit a crime? And since we've been able to really allow our principals more local rule, we've seen those numbers come way down. One of the things that I worked on when I came back on the board four years ago was the number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions was way too high. I mean, you can't teach a child if they're not in the classroom. And so, Dr. Lewis and the administration really went to work on trying to figure out what we have to do to keep our children in school. That doesn't mean you charge them with a misdemeanor and throw them out, okay? What it means is that you put in positive behavior programs that help them understand what the implications are to their behavior. And once they get to understand it, then you start to see behavior change. And that's really kind of where I come from, is what you want to do is, one, you want to help them understand one, you want to help them understand what their behavior is doing, both negative and positive. And then you want to really reinforce that positive side. We've seen those numbers come way down, and I'm proud of that work.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Dr. Taylor, let me unpin you next and unmute you, or pin you and unmute you. What feedback do you have on that question?
I do agree that a lot of latitude should be given to the administrators of the schools to make discretionary actions and disciplinary actions concerning children. However, one of the things that I believe is most important and a lot of attention needs to be paid to in this 21st century is educating faculty to understand the difference between behavioral issues and mental health issues. Because there has been a serious infraction to individuals. They have been labeled as having behavioral issues when in fact there is a mental health disorder and diagnosis that if the faculty, the teachers, the principals would have known, then the situation could have been handled entirely different. I believe that one of the main strings on my radar is to bring redress to the mental health awareness. And that's going on within Muskogee County. Because when it is that a child is acting out, is this child acting out because they have a behavior problem? Or is this child acting out because of a trigger and they have a PTSD diagnosis? And so we have to be able to differentiate between what's going on with this child. I believe that when we can do those things, then we would see a lessening in the suspension rate.
Thank you. I think that's a really excellent point, something to, for teachers to always keep in mind. And I would hope that that would be a part of information that they would get when they have, you know, children. And, but that's easier in elementary school, I guess, when you probably have a smaller group. And when you have a larger population of high school students that are coming in and out of your class, that would be more difficult. But thank you very much. And now Ms. Aaron, would you like to, and I'm still, it's still saying you're muted. There you go. Would you like to add anything, please?
I would just like to add that in my programs, I work with several children that have mental health diagnoses. And I have personal children that are very close to me that also still have those. But I do want to say that there is a need to keep all of our children safe. And while I'm also not familiar with the law that we're referencing right now, when I'm elected, I'm gonna do all the research I can and get with other board members and learn from them, you know, such as Ms. Kathy. I'm listening to her and I think what she said was great. She's very seasoned and she understands what she's talking about. But I also, you know, once I get with them and we discuss different things, I do have a voice and I will give my input on certain things. But there is a need to keep all of our children safe. So whatever that law is, that I'm gonna, once I'm done with the form, I'm gonna do my research tonight and, you know, and read about it and try to learn about it. But there is a great need to keep our children safe.
Thank you. And just FYI to those of you on the call, Harry linked the website that describes and, you know, cites that law. So if you want to go over and just download it while you're not answering, you'll be able to have that right there. So thanks, Harry. Thank you very much to Sheri. Okay, we have a question from Leanna Feggins to all of you. And so Sheri, I'll keep you unmuted and you can answer first. It is, what are your plans to ensure that students with an IEP have that access to one-on-one education with their teachers if schools were to remain closed? Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. You must have automatically muted because I didn't touch it.
Okay, there we go. I'm unmuted.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Right now during the pandemic, we're able to utilize the Zoom. I think that if this is gonna, if this is gonna be a prolonged situation that the children with IEPs need to especially have these, this technology, have these computers, you know, maybe sent to their homes or dropped off or if their parents are able to pick them up, to pick them up because they can do the Zoom meetings, you know, right now with their teachers.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Taylor, let me... Okay, how would you address that?
One of the ways that we can address this is via phone conference. And as she said, using technology, Zoom meetings, things of those calibers. However, bridging the gap and creating and partnering with programs and resources within the community to enable the children to get the necessary resources if they aren't able to, let's say, per se, because I know residents of District 7 that don't have internet access. So if they aren't able to have the Zoom meetings, partnering with organizations within the community that are still able to give and meet the standards that are outlined in the IEP. Again, with this pandemic, it has forced us to create a new norm as it pertains to distant learning and education as a whole. So I think it's important that we begin to lay the parameters of what that would look like as it pertains to addressing IEPs.
Thank you very much. And then Kathy, I just unmuted you. And what is your take on that? Because I know especially, you know, special education teachers have been very stretched trying to give the individual attention that they usually are able to give in the classroom.
Yeah, special education teachers is one of the areas that this administration worked incredibly hard to try to close the gap of those open positions because it's a specialty that is in such demand throughout the country. I mean, Columbus is not unique to that. But one of the things that we've done in Muskogee County is we've been real creative, both in how to recruit for those positions as well as really ensuring that we show our appreciation in their paychecks. We augment our special education teachers with bonuses. We're one of the few districts in Georgia that do that. And I think we're actually one of the top paying districts in the area for special needs teachers. And that has helped us close that open gap. But, you know, I'd like to also talk a little bit about what we've done over the past two years with our PES department, where we've really, our special education department and specialists have really worked on what we call a continuum. So that it goes from, you know, a child, a student that is just having a bad day, okay? He's just having a bad day and just needs a little bit of extra attention, all the way to that student that is non-verbal, that needs one-on-one attention all the time, and everything in between. And we've brought in, you know, partnerships that have allowed those students to get the amount of attention that is needed for where they are. And again, I, you know, started out when I opened my comments, we're talking about meeting the child where they are to ensure we get them what they need. And that's child by child. And working on this continuum for our behavioral, for children with behavioral problems, everything from attention deficit to PTSD to various levels of the spectrum of autism. The autism wings that we've put into every level of our schools that allow us to de-escalate an autistic child's meltdown to make sure that we get them the wraparound services that are needed so that we can stabilize them and then reengage them back into mainstream schools. We have gone, we've just, we've gone leap years in being able to provide for these students. And, you know, you see it not only, you see it, I remember the father this year that came to us and said, you know, the best thing that ever happened was my son got involved in this program. You saved his life. And he teared up at the podium of our school meeting, of our board meeting. You know, we don't usually get that. We get the people who come down and talk about everything we're doing wrong. But when it comes to special education, the dyslexia programs that we're now implementing are life-changing to our students that suffer from dyslexia that often were misdiagnosed as behavioral problems. That's changing their lives. And we have these amazing professionals that are focused, laser-focused on our special needs children and making just all the difference in the world for them.
That is so good to hear, so good to know. Thank you very much for that. Thanks for those examples. We, I want to ask everyone, if you have a question, please either write question in the chat box or write out your question. Right now, we only have one more. So if you have a question, now's the time to get it in. I'm going to, let's see. Again, since you're unmuted already, Kathy, this last question is, what ideas would you suggest to help create a better relationship between African-American young men in District 7? And I'm gonna include District 3 as well because it's, you know, relevant. Law enforcement and diverse communities, especially, so between the young African-American men and law enforcement, especially after the recent shooting catastrophe of Ahmaud Arbery?
Yes, you know, this is something that has always been near and dear to my heart. As a graduate of Spencer High School, I, you know, I can remember back in the 70s the intense friction, racial friction that occurred in our schools. And now we're seeing it throughout the community. And what we've done, both through our PBIS system, the positive behavioral support systems within the schools, but we've also, which, you know, we're working with all law enforcement agencies on how to de-escalate, how to talk to students, because it's different in a school environment. You know, a police officer, whether they're one of ours or a sheriff or whatever arm they're coming from, talking to a student in a school that's got some tension going on is completely different than in the community. And making sure that every one of our law enforcement officers that are in our schools now have the highest level of training, but also working with the other officers in the police department, sheriff's department, on how to de-escalate. How to, for example, a de-escalation for an autistic child is completely different than de-escalation of a child who's angry. That is totally different from a de-escalation of a child who has been bullied and feels their life is threatened. And you know what? I don't know that that's black or white. I really think that's just all of our students. And we have to make sure that the police that are in our schools, whether they're our own or our communities, understand and respect because that's how they're going to earn the understanding and respect from our students. And when our students begin to have a mutual respect with our law enforcement officers, you're gonna start seeing, you know, a lot better relationships as those young men become adult men because they will have fostered that relationship from an early age.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna go to Ms. Aaron and then back to our, finish up with Dr. Taylor. So let's... Do that. Let's see. Okay, you're unmuted, Sheri. So if you could, talk a little bit about fostering a better relationship between law enforcement and our young men.
I believe that it's about building bridges with law enforcement, with the children. Learn how to communicate with them, speaking to them on their level to what they understand. And they become comfortable with you. My husband was a police officer here in Columbus, Georgia. He did a lot of community policing, a little bit too, with our community, with our boys in our neighborhood. They learned him. They got comfortable with him. When they had issues, they were able to approach him. And he made them feel comfortable to where it's not always aggressive. So a lot of times what we're seeing is the relationship between our young men and our young ladies. Because again, I have residential programs for young ladies and they are very aggressive as well. So the relationship, building the relationship is very important. Being in the communities, the police officers and sheriff's departments and just law enforcement as a whole, being present in our communities, not only when there's a problem, to make our children feel comfortable. I think that that's somewhere that we should start.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Okay, and... Dr. Taylor, you are unmuted.
Thank you so much. I think the most appropriate way that I can answer this question that is before us is from the spectrum of being an African-American in the 21st century. As a black man, I can tell you that it is, it creates tension when it is that you are approached by a law enforcement official. I am a well-educated black man. I am a prominent black man within the community. Yet when I am approached by law enforcement, I have to reconcile in my thinking how to communicate this situation that is now before me. I think that we have to educate our young black men, one, on who they are as African-Americans, teaching them their history, letting them understand that they do not have to be statistics of the environment in which they come from. Letting them know that they have been gifted and grafted to be more than what any stigma may have tried to be placed onto them. Teaching them conflict resolution, teaching them how to de-escalate situations. But then also, as I've communicated with the chief down at the police department, it's imperative that our law enforcement officials, as Sheri said, do more community policing, come out into our neighborhoods during times of peace when there is no conflict, so that our young people, and our young men especially, will begin to understand how to communicate and talk to law enforcement officials. We have to stop the profiling and the racism that exists within this city. As a black man, here just in this campaign alone, I saw it myself. So I know that it exists and it is a challenge for young men in the school system who have not been educated on how to handle themselves in these types of situations. And so I believe it's important that we cultivate forums, that we cultivate mentorship programs that teach young men how to become productive men in our community.
Thank you very much. I know that those intentions are utmost. And I just, I know it's all of our wish that these things could come to pass and be effective for larger groups. Because I've seen a lot of different outreach just through, just in the Muskogee Democrats. A lot of our members are involved with different things and it just needs to be more. So anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you. I have, it looks like, I just have a follow-up question specifically for Ms. Williams as a current-serving board member regarding the IEP question. So I'm going to unmute you and just ask her follow-up. But then I'll just ask you to go into your closing statements and then we'll go to Dr. Taylor and then finish up with Ms. Aaron. And what the follow-up is, is that she was more curious as to what programs are in place now for individuals who struggle with not having in-person communication. You know, that even though we have this pandemic challenge, that some of the children with IEPs, you know, just remote learning isn't really, isn't really cutting it as far as quality for them. And she's asking you to follow up on that, if you could.
I'm not sure exactly how to follow up, you know, other than what I've said. I do know that we are monitoring our IEPs. That has not stopped. We're still administering the programs necessary to ensure that the IEPs are being met. We have provided the Chromebooks to all, I think, all of our students with IEPs that didn't have them before, because we had already rolled them out to our high schools and our middle schools. But I know that we've also rolled them out to some of our special needs. But but I know that we've also rolled them out to some of our special needs children. So, you know, I know the staff is monitoring IEPs. They're they're still required to adhere to them. We're using such as this, we're using video conferencing, you know, phone, phone counseling, what really whatever we can under the, you know, the strict guidelines that we have to adhere to of not being able to be, you know, person to person. So we're we're doing as much as I can. Now, that's not to say that there is nobody or no situation that hasn't fallen through the cracks. And if that's the case, give me a call, reach out to me, let me know. Let me then make sure that the people within the administration know. That's our job as as school board members, is to be that liaison for our parents that may feel not comfortable to try to contact the administration directly. And that's one of the joys of this job, is to being able to help my constituents with their personal issues that they may have with our district.
Great. I think that's a great suggestion. I was going to offer that myself, to definitely reach out. You're very accessible. So thank you very much. Okay, so what would you like to say in closing, Kathy?
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Democrats. I appreciate, again, you putting this together for us. So I'm Kathy Williams. I'm a mother and co-mother of four adult children and two amazing grandchildren. I have lived, worked, played, and prayed in District Seven for decades. I'm a proud graduate of William Henry Spencer High School and president and CEO of Neighbor Works Columbus, a nonprofit housing organization that I have led for over 20 years. As a member of the District Seven Schools team, because that's what we are, we're we're just part of a team, it has been a joy to work with District Seven principals and watch their extraordinary accomplishments over the past four years. I've watched their CC, RPI scores or climate score ratings, but both move upward in every one of our schools and have enjoyed the creativity that they have all shown to engage our students and their families. I believe in meeting every child where they are and supporting what they need to be successful, whether it's academic, athletic, artistic, or autistic. And I'm asking for the support from the District Seven voters to return me to the position so that I can continue the work, because there is still a lot of work to be done. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome, Kathy. Thank you for being here. Next, I'm going to Dr. Taylor. The floor is yours for your closing statement.
Thank you so much, again, to the Democrat for hosting this forum tonight. It has been an absolute joy. Again, I am Walter Taylor. I am a citizen. I am a pastor. I'm a business owner. I'm a parent. I'm a husband. I'm all of those things. But most of all, I'm a part of District Seven, born and raised in District Seven. I I hurt when I see the children of District Seven not have the necessities that they need to be productive in their academia. It grieves my heart that we don't have some of the same resources that other schools have. And so because of such, I am coming out this election to secure the seat for representation of District Seven on Muskogee County School Board, so that I can fight to get the resources that are needed to better the schools in District Seven, to better the environment, to better the workload and get qualified teachers into our schools in District Seven, so that we can become that beacon of hope and that beacon of light like other schools around this state. And so I'm excited to be that voice for the citizens of District Seven. I'm excited to represent the people of District Seven. So I need your help and your support in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. It's great to get to meet you, as much in person as we can. And now, finally, thank you, Ms. Erin, for joining us tonight. And let us, as soon as it switches over, there we go, please give us your closing statement.
Again, I thank you for allowing me to to share this platform. Prayerfully, you all have learned a little bit about me this evening. You know that that I'm eager to to serve in District Number Three. Also, not just our district, but all the children of Muskogee County. I am also a mother of two beautiful daughters, but I also mother another 12 in my residential programs. I'm a wife and I'm also a veteran. I have a three-tier program, a plan, I'm I'm sorry, a three-tier plan. Once I'm elected, to to implement building, building bridges, of being a collaborative member who is committed to reviewing all information and working alongside other board members to make decisions that provide the best education for all Muskogee County students, breaking barriers, being an active vocal participant on the school board, advocating for the resources for parents, educators, and children, boldly taking a stand for education. I am not a politician. And the education of our children should not be a game of politics nor popularity. It's time for representation that is actively engaged and present on a daily basis. Again, I can't say it enough, what I've heard as I've visited my neighbors is that we don't have anyone that is accessible in our district. And I plan to be accessible once I'm elected, so that I can be able to help our families and neighbors and listen to them and help them through whatever issues they may have. I'm a parent and like I said, I have children in Muskogee County School District. So I hear firsthand, you know, and I'm a, I'm a part of things that are in the schools. And my children, they they bring things to me. And I'm able to go and 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 work through whatever issues they have. And I want to have my parents to understand that I will help them work through the same thing. So again, my name is Sherry Erin. You know, prayerfully, like I said, you guys have learned me and you will welcome me with open arms. And I have your support and prayerfully, your vote on June 9.
Thank you very much, Ms. Erin. Thanks for being here. It was great to get to meet you as well. Okay, everyone, we will, we have videotaped, we have videotaped, you know, get the VHS out. We have recorded this session, so we will post that on our Facebook page and I'll send it out to our candidates, just so that you can take a look and share or whatever you would like to do with it. Thank you all so much for being here as candidates. We we also, I want to mention that Vanessa Jackson, as we talked about at the beginning of the evening, she could not be with us tonight due to her work schedule. But I'm thinking that she will be able to attend, or I hope so, at the the forum that's scheduled next week through the AKAs, the Deltas, the Links, the Ministerial Alliance and Urban League, Young Professionals. So we'll share that as well, that information, so everyone can check that out. And thank you to all who who attended tonight, who are, who care about your, your, you know, you don't have to be a parent to to care about the school board. You, a school is, public schools are important, are vital, are actually the fundamental building blocks of our society, in my opinion. And so they, you know, when people say, well, I don't want to pay taxes. I don't have any kids in school. I I just, that that reasoning is so faulty and we all know why. It's just, it it's very important. And I'm very grateful to all of you who came to hear from our candidates and to ask questions. So that is it. Hope you all stay well and healthy. Thanks for being here and have a good evening. Bye, everybody. Hi, I am muted, everybody, so we can hear all our chatter.
Hi, Apostle Taylor. Win, win!
And I'm going to leave this, just so that if anybody wanted to go in the chat room to download.
District Seven Apostle Taylor, let's go!
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Bye.